We have two public comment sections according to our new White River Township regulations. And so the first public comment is for anything not to do with the solar zoning ordinance amendments, okay? So I'm calling the meeting to order. It is 6:30 PM. Julie, please do a roll call. Bob Hagan. Bob Hagan.
President.
Don Klein.
Here.
Karen McLean.
Here.
Craig Harris.
Here.
Morrison McGlue.
Here.
Patty Sargent.
Present.
Susan Loy.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, please.
I'll make that motion.
Office floor. Craig Harris moved and Patty Sargent seconded to adopt the April 19th, 2023 agenda as written. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay, we have approved this agenda. We're moving on to the regular planning commission meeting, March 21st minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Support. Bob Hagan supports it.
Thank you. Patty Sargent moved to approve the minutes of March 21st and Bob Hagan seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. We have approved the minutes of the White River Township Planning Commission, March 21st, 2023, regular meeting. And we will open up to public comments other than solar. If you would please make your way to this microphone and state your name and address and you'll have three minutes to speak. Are you looking for a seat, sir?
Sorry, what? The last meeting? You said you guys were gonna do the solar stuff first and then we'd be done meeting after that.
Well, we just approved this agenda as you see on the plate. So, alrighty, moving right along as there are no comments other than solar. I'd like to introduce Patty Sargent. Just wave your hand Patty. She is our planning commission secretary for tonight. Julie Gurke is our recording secretary over here. And we have with us Cliff Bloom, who is the White River Township attorney, who would like to speak to you.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Good evening, everyone. I would like to give, if I could, a little background on this. I think a lot of the audience is well informed already, but they're might be exposed and have just come into this process. So, what is frequently referred to as a solar farm is regulated by current section 3.45 of White River Township zoning ordinance, which as most of you know was enacted in 2019. Late last summer, the White River Township Planning Commission began working on potential new amendments to the existing solar farm regulations contained in zoning ordinance. The White River Township Planning Commission has been working on those proposed amendments for approximately over seven months. The latest draft is dated April 14, 2023, and I think both that draft and earlier drafts have been lost by the township. That draft is based upon countless public comments involving the township planner, the township attorney, review of other solar ordinances from other municipalities and a variety of other sources of information.
Can you hear me now? Oh, okay. I apologize.
White River Township currently has a relatively short-term moratorium in effect for solar farms. The moratorium will expire soon. One of the reasons why additional amendments may be prudent for the zoning ordinance is the large size of the solar farms being proposed recently throughout Michigan. In the past, the existing and proposed solar farms in West Michigan were relatively small. For instance, some were 10, 20, or 40 acres, but rarely were they larger. However, the scale of many of the solar farms now being proposed at the current time is much larger and in some instances could take up a significant percentage of the total area of the particular township or municipality involved. Such changed conditions and circumstances necessitate the review of zoning regulations by many municipalities in Michigan. The issue at tonight's planning commission hearing is the proposed further amendments to the White River Township zoning ordinance regarding solar farms, which as I said initially were enacted in 2019. At the current time, there is no pending application with White River Township for a solar farm. The application from November of 2022 by Lakeside Solar LLC was returned to the county by the township once the moratorium went into effect. In the interim, Lakeside Solar has filed a federal lawsuit against the township. White River Township cannot operate on a blank slate regarding solar farm regulations. Both Michigan law and federal law put constraints on Michigan townships regarding how strict zoning regulations can be. First, zoning regulation cannot be exclusionary, that is, a township cannot totally exclude a proposed land use or activity where it is reasonable and there is a demonstrated need. Second, a zoning regulation cannot be arbitrary or unreasonable. Third, a zoning regulation cannot violate equal protection or due process constitutional principles. Finally, a zoning regulation cannot be so strict or extreme that it constitutes a taking of the property. If a township zoning regulation violates any of these principles of law and litigation occurs, the municipality involved could potentially be liable for monetary damages. Alternately, court can invalidate any zoning regulations that violate the law or constitutional protections. The other risk that a municipality runs in Michigan if the municipality regulates a use or activity in a fashion that is exclusionary or too strict is that the industry involved may convince the Michigan legislature to enact legislation that preempts or precludes all local municipal regulation of that use or activity, and unfortunately, that's occurring more frequently now. In the current situation, if the township does not enact new amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding solar farms, the existing 2019 amendments will remain in place and be applicable. Madam Chairperson, this is simply a general overview regarding solar farms and is not intended to apply to any specific proposal situation. I'd be glad to answer any questions the planning commission might have now or later.
Thank you, Cliff. Does anyone on the commission have questions for Cliff at this time? Okay. Natalie up in the booth there, would you please switch the screen to the quick reference file? I'm just gonna go over these real quick so there's no confusion about how we're doing the public hearing. This is the second required comment period for the meeting, and it is also the public hearing focused on the zoning ordinance amendments only. And the recession of the solar moratorium. So each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. Don Klein is our timekeeper and he will give speakers a 30-second warning. So at two and a half minutes, if you're still speaking, you can expect a little nudge from You can't transfer or delegate your public comment to someone else. If a group is designating a speaker and that speaker uses their three minutes, or not even three minutes, the representative will speak for the group and individual members of that group will not speak. I will recognize each speaker. You have signed as you came in and we will be calling names off that list as they were written in. All public comments shall be directed to and through the chair. No member of the public shall directly address any other member of the public or any other township official, so we can keep our conversations this evening going smoothly. Specific answers to a citizen's questions need not be given by the chair or other township officials at the time requested, but may at the township's discretion be followed up legally. And it goes without saying that we ask no member of the public to interrupt another person who is lawfully speaking. And then at the bottom, we just have to add that no profane or obscene speech and please no breaching of the peace. Okay, I make a motion that we open the public hearing. Support. Okay, any discussion? All in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Okay, the public hearing is open at 6:43 PM. Steve Nagoda, please come up here. Steve, are you out there? I see him. After Steve, we have Ken Jacobson, then Kurt Guder, Lauren Wacernagel. Steve, please state your name and address.
Steve Nagoda, 7207 Sunset Lane.
Closer to the mic.
Natalie, Natalie, how are we doing?
Not good.
How's that? Hello? All right? Does that work? Hello? Hello? A few things. Number one, I'd like to congratulate the board for doing an excellent job of running a tough meeting with a lot of dissenting opinions. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm gonna repeat myself, I've said this at other meetings, I believe in solar power, I believe in global warming, I also believe in the character of the township, and I think the township board has done a good job of trying to craft something that will not please everybody, but should be a really good compromise, in my opinion. Thanks.
Ken.
It is, oh, good. So I'm Ken Jacobson. I'm Ken Jacobson. So my family has a cottage in Gray Dunes on 32 Feather Ridge, and my wife and I own some property around Lost Valley, doesn't have an address because we haven't built anything on it yet. I support the proposed ordinance. Its guidelines for appropriately citing the solar arrays as well as capping the total acreage of the utility scale solar. I'd like to take this opportunity to urge the township to also work with the solar developer and farmers leasing their land to ensure that the arrays will support the dual use of growing crops or grazing livestock within the solar arrays called agro-phytics. There are many young farmers throughout the United States interested in purchasing or leasing their own farms that can't find land, according to many news reports in the American Farmland Trust. The Young Farmers Coalition is advocating for $2.5 billion, a 10-year investment in the 2023 Farm Bill that would go towards securing 1 million acres of land for young farmers. Maybe a new strawberry grower or shepherd would be interested in leasing the farmland under these arrays as well as buy other farmland in the township. 20 years is a long time to not have the option to also grow and raise food on these agriculturally-zoned lands. Dual use isn't just about keeping these farmlands in agricultural use, it's also good business producing more revenue per acre.
Thank you. Kurt?
My name is Kurt Guder. I live in Williamston, Michigan. I own a farm on Iders Road. After reviewing the draft ordinance, I wondered how this would affect my farm. So I took the parcels of my farm and actually drew sketches of the setbacks, et cetera. So I own a 40-acre parcel south of Iders Road, and when I imposed a 600-foot setback as required by the ordinance, I could use one-third of one acre of that 40 acres to develop a solar project. My largest contiguous property is four parcels consisting of a total of 182 acres north of Iders Road. When I put the 600-foot setbacks on those four parcels, the resulting effect would be I could use 20 acres of the 182 acres to develop a solar project. My final two parcels are bisected by the Pearson Drain, so between the Pearson Drain setback requirements and the 600-foot setbacks, I could not use those parcels at all. So in summary, my 290-acre farm would be limited, under this ordinance as it's drafted, to a total of about 20 acres that could be used for a solar project. After completing these sketches, I truly thought the township's draft ordinance, if it was strictly enforced, would be a taking of my property by prohibiting me from using it for any solar project. I don't believe a commercial solar project developer would come in and use my farm for a solar project. In my opinion, if this draft ordinance is adopted as a new ordinance, it would prohibit the development of a commercial-scale solar project and negatively affect be in excess of $1 million, and the Montague school system in excess of $10 to $15 million based upon Lakeside Solar's estimates that were presented at the public information meeting here at the high school a few months ago. I'd like to leave a copy of my sketches with the secretary if I could, and you can take a look at those at your convenience if you're interested to confirm my estimate.
Laura Wacernagel, and Craig, begins with an H, Hotstutter, Craig Smith, Jeff Stein. Uh-uh, hang on a second. Thank you.
Lauren Wacernagel, 10137 Old Highway 99. I support the new amendment to the solar ordinance as it is reasonable and comprehensive. It is much more comprehensive for utility-scale solar than the previous ordinance, and it aligns with the Township Master Plan and our rural character. I especially appreciate the 600-foot setbacks. They do a lot to protect our property values and our overall health, safety, and welfare of the community. While the 5% is better than no limit, it is still too high. I recommend a 2% maximum of the township land in the other requests that are in the residence letter as put together. 2% is still much higher than the township's demonstrated need. The updated amendments to the ordinance are reasonable. They balance protecting property rights and zoning community and renewable energy goals. I'm not anti-solar. This amendment to the ordinance allows utility-scale solar in our community and is a big compromise. Thank you for all your hard work putting together these amendments, and thank you to the community for all the support to get this compromised on.
Thank you. Greg, are you nearby?
Yes.
Okay. Craig Smith, are you nearby? Here he comes. Okay, meanwhile, Jeff Stein, you wanna start your way up here, please?
Yeah, thanks. My name is Craig Smith. I live at 8730 Chase Road in the heart of White River Township. I represent my family of six. I am here in support of our White River Township Board and Planning Commission and amendments to the solar ordinance precisely in scope of this solar project. Thank you, thank you, thank you for listening to your residents, and thank you for all your hard work. People appreciate it.
Thank you, Craig. Judy Lequire, Wiley Frye, Sarah Hilli.
Hi, my name is Jeff Stein. I live at 8782 Chase Road. I'd like to thank the planning commission for all the hard work that they've endured over the last several months. It's obviously, they've tried very hard to take everyone's point of view into consideration regarding a solar ordinance for our township. This particular issue is very important to maintaining the overall character of our community, and it's very obvious that you have not taken this task lightly, and for that, I thank all of you. I do support the new proposed solar ordinance. I believe this does give landowners an opportunity to have solar systems on their land and at the same time prevent them from becoming large industrial complexes that do not represent the objective of our Township Master Plan. I think we all can agree that 1,700 acres of solar panels in no way represents what the authors of our master plan had in mind when they stated a goal was to maintain patterns of development that accommodate, enhance, and preserve the township's pastoral settings, rural amenities, open spaces, and scenic beauty. In a perfect world for me in regards to this proposed ordinance, I would prefer to see the total acreage capped somewhere around 200% of the total land. I feel like this would just further the effectiveness of maintaining the goal of the master plan while still creating an opportunity for solar development. Again, thank you all, and I'd like to submit some letters from other residents that couldn't be here today.
Judy is up next.
Hi, my name is Judy Lequire. My husband and I live on Post Road, 6925. I'm sorry, little joke. When we first moved out here, I worked in the public schools, and they would say, "Well, where do you live?" And I said, "It's Post Road." And they'd perk up and say, "Oh, that's right across Fall Dan Iler's barn." I guess. Well, isn't that right next to her, the Schiller's old farm? Now, I know my age is showing, but we moved out here in 1977. We had moved back to Michigan from Indiana, and we had lived a couple of years in White Hall, and then we had the ability to look for a house in the country. We moved to Post Road with the idea that our children would have room to have a pony. Well, Dan Iler's farm was across the road, so we got a pony. We also wanted other animals, and we ended up with goats and no chickens, a horse and a garden. And at that time, 20 acres, I believe it is now, is the smallest that a large acre, a large piece of land could be cut into before it could be cut down for housing parcels. So we bought 20 acres behind us. This was in 1977. We have lived in the same spot. We raised the goats, we raised the horses, we raised the ponies, and we raised our children in the public schools. Now, there may be problems with funding schools and other services, and I'm, having worked in the schools, in the elementary school and the high school resource room, and went back and got my teaching degree so I could substitute, I know the quality of our schools. Our children both went to the public schools. One started out at Mount School, ended up going to U-Haul.
Do you wanna simply state, do you support the amendment or not?
I support the amendment, and I think you have done a super job with bringing in all the different problems.
Wiley.
Hi, my name is Wiley Frye. I live at 5065 Glendale Avenue in Montague, the city of Montague. And I'm here today because I'm worried about the precedent set by the 600-foot setback. I own 50 acres of woods up in Montague Township, and 600 feet is all the way across my property. It's long, but it's skinny. And I am a permaculture designer, I strongly support, have provisions being in place to protect the soil, to allow agrivoltaics, but 600 feet is just a really big imposition onto somebody's property, and that seems like, I don't know, just a lot to give up. So wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Melissa Lorenz, Paul Smith, Stephen Ribbit, Torben Croontoff.
I'm Sarah Philly. I live in Whitehall. I do not support the ordinance. I think it's restrictive and unnecessary. I support solar, and in order to do solar as a public utility or as a public good, it has to expand beyond individual municipalities' individual zip codes. Solar is not a viable utility in a boutique model under 80 acres in the same way that our agricultural farms are not viable at a scale that's not industrial. The solar farming needs to be at the same scale financially as the farming itself, and the benefits for this solar array would far exceed our region. The availability of the solar as a utility is not simply a local issue. It's part of a larger conversation of the state to support clean energy and wean ourselves from fossil fuels. So, an ordinance that's so restrictive would basically prohibit solar at the necessary scale in this municipality.
Good evening, Planning Committee. Thank you for having us here tonight, and thank you for all of the work that you've done on the ordinance. I second the speakers before me that are in support of this ordinance. So sorry, am I echoing? It feels like I am from here. Okay, there we go. So, I second support. I would encourage, if there's another chance, to look at the acreage cap, to move it to 2%, which matches the consumer's energy stated need. I would say the ordinance is anything but restrictive, with allowing 5% of the total land, that's 500 acres. So, I think you've done a remarkable job of reflecting your residents and your master plan. Thank you so very much.
And Stephen Ribbit, are you nearby? Please come up. Thank you, Stephen. And then Torben? Thank you, Torben. Okay.
Good evening. My name's Paula Smith. I live on Old Channel Trail in White River Township. And I grew up in Whitehall, and I went away to college, have a career in manufacturing in Grand Rapids. When I had the opportunity to move out of Grand Rapids, my husband and I could have really moved anywhere, and we chose White River Township. I had to talk him into moving here. He'd never been to Montague, but I always loved White River Township. And when we looked at other places to live, including here, we did a very thorough review of all of the zoning in those areas to make sure that our investment would be, you know, last year, and it was a good place to support what we wanted for the rest of our lives, because we plan to live in that house for the rest of our lives. We love it here because it's very natural, you know, the lakes, the clear land, the woods and everything. I do have to drive by DuPont every day, but let's just spend here longer than I've been alive. So, that's part of it. But I just wanted to thank everybody on the commission for all the hard work that you put into this. I read all of the changes in the amendment yesterday. It's very inclusive, things I would have never even thought of. I want to thank everybody in the community for their efforts in it. I do believe in property owner rights, and I think that's the importance of zoning, so that when we buy our land and stuff, we can rely on that those zones and zonies will exist and that they will also be enforced. So hopefully, these will all be enforceable also. And thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm in favor.
Good evening, Chairman. My name is Stephen Ribbit, and I do not live in the township. I live in Grand Ledge, Michigan, and I am here representing Land and Liberty Coalition, which is part of CEN, a nonprofit organization for the advancement of solar in our country, the state of Michigan. I also, full disclosure, am a Planning Commission member in Grand Ledge. So, I come from that side of the table as well, and I commend you. You've done a yeoman's job in the process of evaluating this, but I also want to express to you the concerns that we have in our commission, and you should also be having these concerns as well, as to the legal ramifications of any ordinance that you bring before the board for their approval. Now, I'm, again, speaking from my own experience in writing ordinances and being a part of the process, and I would basically come out in support of solar, not necessarily this restrictive ordinance, and specifically, we're looking at the setbacks as well as, you know, the parcel utilization. I think what you're going to find is a lot of legal action in order to make this come to fruition. At Land and Liberty, we have four pillars. That is, landowners' rights. We also are concerned with economic development. Not to say this is going to bring thousands of jobs and lots of opportunities, but it's going to bring a lot of money to the township, for the schools, and for the government, as well as farmers. And then, we're also resting on the pillar of national security and defense. Having solar power and renewable resources in your own backyard means a lot in regard to our national security. It's a subject that's not brought up very often. And lastly is the augmentation of our energy resources and how we can bring green, renewable energy to communities like this. So, again, I'm here to oppose the movement of this ordinance forward to the board, and the reason, again, is for you on the Planning Commission to eliminate the possibility of losses which will follow as a result of this. Thank you very much.
Torben. And after, we have Tamara Horn, Lori Coleman, Bill Diddy.
My name is Torben Croontoff. I live at 11660 Big Flower Creek. And I have heard about the plans, and I haven't paid that close attention to it, but one thing that struck me was that you have, what is it, 1,300 acres of polluted land. Why not put solar power on that? Is there a legal thing that prevents you from approving solar power of an industrial size on a certain part of land that is not usable for anything else? Or has that already been addressed? The other thing that I have been thinking about in terms of solar power and land use, I know you don't have a freeway going through, but all the land in the, between the two freeways, there's a lot of land that is not being used, but could be used for solar power. And it seems like nobody has ever thought of doing that. Not that it's a planning issue, Torben, but I just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Camara? I'm sorry, Camara, Tamara?
Good evening. My name is Tamara Horn. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I live in the city of Whitehall. The proposed amendments to the solar ordinance are too restrictive. Specifically, the significant increase in setbacks and the lot restrictions to utility solar are problematic. These amendments would make White River Township's solar ordinance among the most restrictive in Michigan. I do not want to see the township paying more legal fees to test the limits of solar ordinances. I do want to see compromise. I want the Planning Commission and board members to find an agreeable middle ground. The proposed amendments don't appear to consider the ordinance requests from landowners who'd like to lease a part of their property. The fact is, multiple landowners in White River Township want some form of utility-scale solar project. Listening to these landowners would keep the land stewardship local. I understand the Planning Commission aims to plan for and protect the agricultural land in the township, but a restrictive solar ordinance may force some landowners to sell to developers. The proposed provisions are an outlier when compared to other solar ordinances. I ask you not to vote for restrictive solar ordinance. Keep compromise on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori Coleman.
Good evening, Lori Coleman, 4874 On Secame, Montague. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. The amendments being presented are too restrictive and reflect the interests of a small group of stakeholders. I ask the commission to pause on this vote. We are a small community. We are not going to thrive in a place that is divided and filled with misinformation and mistrust. We need to come together. I was inspired and energized listening to leaders at the My Healthy Climate Conference last week in Detroit. Over 600 people from around the state attended. Governor Whitmer and leaders at the county and city levels spoke about the positive efforts and solutions citizens everywhere are creating to address society's biggest challenge, the move to clean energy. Let us take a step back and come together and think about the bigger picture and the serious challenges we are facing. Let us be positive, proactive, and create solutions that consider all stakeholders in the Whitelake community. Thank you.
Bill Diddy's next, and Mary Jo, followed by Linda Huey and David Ramson. Hold on just a second. Okay, thank you, Bill.
All right. First, thank you to the Planning Commission for your efforts to take the initiative and the time needed to engage with industry experts like we've heard.
Name and hit.
Yep, Bill Diddy, 7540 North Old Channel Trail, property in White River Township. All right. Research and learn from other communities, like the resulting flooding due to the utility solar installation in Montague, and listening to your constituents. We thank you. Secondly, I'd like to thank my fellow White River Township residents for participating in township meetings, when possible, and providing meaningful feedback. To that end, I support the 10 proposed amendments provided to you in a letter on April 17th on behalf of 49 of your White River Township residents. In summary, and I can go into all those, the 10 proposed amendments include referencing the master plan. Number two, lowering the total land coverage cap to 2%. You might have heard me mention that last month, while keeping the proposed 600-foot setbacks. Three through five, adding a diagram to understand the 80-acre maximum per parcel, the spacing of trees and shrubs, and reducing the grace period for dead and dying vegetation. Six through nine, in that letter that hopefully you've had a chance to review, updates to remove the word "generally," specify drain tunnel inspections as well as maximum noise levels. And the final one, which makes a lot of sense, is including White River Township as an additional insured, so additional protection for the township. As a resident of White River Township, I again thank you for your consideration of these proposed changes to the solar ordinance amendment that you put together, which is great. Just a few suggestions along those lines, and are meant to allow us to grow with changes in resident needs and technology while protecting our zone community in keeping with the master plan in a beautiful place we call home. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Jo Ernst. I live at 7044 Old Channel Trail. Thank you for listening to all of us tonight, and I know you guys have worked really hard, and there's been a lot of difference of opinions. I'm going to talk about the population density of our township. Density of homes is a listed criteria for determining a temporary camping permit in our township. However, there's been little mention of population density in regards to industrial solar. So, I did some research and compared White River Township to other townships that are unlike Michigan, that do not have a town in them. Using this criteria, I could not find one township along Lake Michigan that had a higher population density than ours. We have a population density of 90 people per square mile and are clearly the desired township to live, visit, and that makes us special. We are in contact with the author of the highly touted Rhode Island Study, which has been quoted at several of our previous meetings. The author, Corey Eichen, told us the typical solar array studied only has a handful of houses on them. With our population density of 90 people per square mile, we have way more homes. This is why we need the 600-foot setback and the 80-acre cap. These reasonable amendments reflect the uniqueness of where we live. I support them with a request of a 2% cap of township land, which is still higher than the projected energy needs of our entire township. I believe in our community supporting and addressing renewable energy. 2% would fulfill our township's commitment to the goals of the state of Michigan. Anything more would be an unreasonable burden. I urge you to pass this truly comprehensive solar ordinance, and I thank you again for all the hard work that you've done.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Linda, followed by David, followed by Kamala Belkin.
Linda Huey, 2899 Memorial Drive. I live in Lakewood Township in Meskegon County. I'm just here to say I do support industrial solar. I think it's an important way for us to have more renewable energy. However, I think that proper placement is very important, and a good example of that would be the 2,000-acre solar farm that Consumers Energy is going to be placing out at the Meskegon wastewater. You know, it's not affecting a bunch of homes and residents or property values. It's one big piece of land that's already owned by the county, and I think that's the route to go. It more than fulfills Meskegon County's efforts to meet the state's goals. So, with that being said, I definitely approve and appreciate what you guys have done and fully support the ordinance as you have already. Thank you.
David.
Good evening. Thank you for all your help. I'm a local farmer and landowner in Detroit. I'm a local farmer and landowner in White River Township. I support the amendments. I would prefer to have a 2% cap on it, and I would also ask the Planning Commission, just like Grant Township did to the festival over there, they put a tax on it. And so, they constantly get money in for what is provided, the township provides for them. So, I would be interested in some kind of tax put on the solar system. So I would be interested in some kind of tax put on the solar system to help the township out with all the expenses. That's all I have to say.
Pamela, followed by Elle, Scott, and Matt Goodrow.
I'm Pamela Belkin, and I live at 10521 Old Highway 99. A few of the things that I've noticed in response to some of the comments that have been made, I'd like to cover before I go into what I originally thought I would just throw away on you. Okay, so have you ever Googled Williamston and found out where one of the people has, one of the leasers of this project?
We aren't answering questions.
Right. That was a rhetorical question. Okay. So I have, and I found a nice, very beautiful house on a lake that one of the leasers lives in. He bought Bob Oller's place, and he's gutted it, tore the house down, so that it looks like a wreck in our township. Now, I mean, I know that I don't have to say these things, and probably I shouldn't, but I have driven down that road so many times and looked at the mess. Okay, that is one of the people who's trying to make another mess here, while he goes to Williamston and lives in a big fine house on a lake. So I want that set. And so I said it. Okay.
So.
So the other thing is, I don't know if you've noticed that the people who come in here and speak for solar and for the proponents, other than the leasers, they're all finely dressed. Okay, I'm not against being finely dressed. Yes, yes, but I'm going, I'll get there, I'll get there.
Try to refrain from personal comments.
Okay, no, I'm saying.
Pam, please listen to me.
Okay, all right. All right, so I'm not trying to make trouble. I'm just saying, maybe it's a corporate thing versus just a homebody like me. Okay? So I want that, I want that noted. We come as we are. We are salt of the earth, and salt preserves, and that's what we're here to do. So we are unified. We are together. You have seen how many numbers come out to the meeting so that we have to rent a big place like this. So thank God for all the blue shirts. And, okay, so my husband, who wrote on the wrong list that he wanted, he wanted to speak, sorry about that, Tim, hazardous waste is put where in this project? I don't know that that's covered, but we don't want it to stay in White River Township. There are a lot of receptacles for waste, hazardous waste, I don't know what they are. They're bins for waste, and we want to know why they are there and where is it going to go? Is it tied?
We'll follow up on that.
Okay, I'm for the, I'm for the proposal.
Goodrow.
Hi, my name is Ellie Goodrow, 8990 Beachridge Drive, White River Township. I'm in support of the current amended small-scale and utility-scale solar ordinances for White River Township. I send support to the board to vote in these amendments as presented to the public.
Thank you. Scott? Goodrow? Matt? Goodrow?
Hi.
Are you Matt? Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Goodrow. I am a student at Montague High School. I live at 8990 Beachridge Drive. I am in support of the current amended.
I've traveled a few places around the world, specifically the United States, and I see solar arrays. They're massive, they're huge, they're ugly. They're built where the sun shines. They don't have to worry about the snow. They don't have to worry about the wind. They're out in the middle of nowhere. You don't see houses within miles and miles and miles. I see them because I'm on the freeway. I'm doing 70 miles an hour. I don't hear sound.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear me? Can't hear me now? Uh, sorry. Department of Justice just announced, late last year became public, it's called IRA, and they've given out, they're giving out, starting May 31st, $10 billion for solar array, EV battery manufacturing plants, wind, specifically in brown areas throughout the country, more so set-specific for coal mining towns and manufacturing areas that are now brown. No employment, no work. The money's there, that's the place to take it. Thank you once again, and there's a lot of people, there's some people that have gone away and have come back. Why do we come back? Well, nature, peace and quiet, no helicopters, no sheriffs of sirens, no ambulances. That's what this place is about. Thank you.
Thank you. John Deegan, Ian Martin, Keith Ramson, Joel Smith. So John Deegan's up now.
John Deegan, 8240 Meyer Park Road. I do want to congratulate your planning commission the way you basically are zoning out this like you zoned out the windmills, and you don't have any concern over property rights of landowners, and I guess that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Ian Martin?
Hi, Ian Martin, 204 South Mirers Avenue, Whitehall. I am in support of these amendments. I'm pro-solar, but I think a reasonable, balanced approach to solar with nuance is appropriate and what the community would want, so that's why I'm in support of these amendments. Thanks.
And Keith. Next up is Joel Smith.
Keith Ramson, 6409 Hancock Road here in White River Township. As a lifelong resident of the township, I want to thank the Planning Commission for listening to the residents of White River and for your hard work crafting a zoning ordinance that is both reasonable and comprehensive, aligns much better with our township master plan. I fully support the ordinance, but I hope that you will first consider the data that Consumers Energy put forth in their TV interview Monday, and cap the net's acreage for industrial solar at 2% of the farmland, which aligns, aligns with their stated renewable energy goals. Thank you, Ian, for your hard work in developing a zoning ordinance that better protects, preserves the general economic well-being of both the residents and landowners of our township. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Joel, again, just a moment. Okay, Joel.
Joel Smith, 11440 Old Highway 99, representing my family of six. I also want to thank the township and the Planning Commission. I do support the solar ordinance as amended, however, I would request that the cap be modified to 2% as that is reasonable for our township's size and also aligned with our master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Connie, Ilers Road. Don't know Connie's last name. Is that you, Connie? Oh, okay, I see you now. Followed by Deborah Hopkinson. And after Deborah is Lara Cludy, Linda Painter.
Connie Cranzer, 5955 Ilers Road. I also rent in Montague, 8638 Sheridan Street. I want to thank you all for doing all the hard work. I mean, 88 pages to 19 pages means that you took a lot of time to look at this. I've also heard you've listened to not only the residents of White Lake Township, but also the White Lake community, and I thank you for taking all of everyone's comments to your hearts and consideration. And I love how you teased out the different solar systems and teasing out small scale and also the utility size. I love all the definitions. I loved also that whoever wrote Article III, the purpose of this amendment, takes into the heart of what you guys were trying to do. It reads beautifully. It also tells me that you're taking all the considerations that we hold near and dear. I think a lot of our community supports solar energy, green energy, but we don't want to see a footprint that that's all that the township takes. I like the fact that you minimized the township coverage. I like you had a maximum size. You added screening and landscape and visual impact, and you're protecting agricultural protection and wildlife environmental protection. All of these things are very important to all of us. The only thing that I want to submit is a little bit of reworking on your pollinator part. It's just something I know about, and I want to just give it to you for your consideration. It's not huge, it's just a few word differences. It makes it a little bit clearer and a little bit stronger. And as we know, pollinator habitat was the reason why people can take, continue their PA 116. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Deborah? Is it Hopkinson?
My name is Deborah Hopkinson. I live at 8713 Lehman Road in White River Township. Like others who've spoken tonight, I am definitely pro-solar energy, the use of energy when it's installed in a suitable environment, and I'm so grateful that you as a board have taken that into consideration with the updating ordinance. This week, a land use attorney representing 49 White River Township residents, including my husband Jim and I, delivered a letter to the township board. The letter thanked the Planning Commission for your incredible work in crafting a solar zoning ordinance, which so much better protects our township's master plan and the health, safety, and welfare of all of the residents of this community. We support the proposed solar zoning ordinance as a whole, but we did ask for a couple of small changes, which we believe bring the ordinance even better in line with the master plan. The most important change we asked for was to reduce the cap of the installation from 500 acres down to 200, which is a total of 5% of our farmland. 500 acres is almost 13% of our farmland, and as has been stated at so many other meetings over the last four months, Consumers Energy only asks for 2% in order to meet and exceed their renewable energy goals by 2030. But when you add that 500 acres to the 1,200 acres of brownfields that we've already lost to DuPont Chemours, that total of agricultural land lost to industry is 42%. The 200 acres is a way to show that we are willing to compromise and meet Consumers Energy halfway, or a little more than halfway. Anyway, the other two changes are just about considering decibels, the noise pollution cost, and we thank you for the passing of the moratorium, which gave you and the entire community time to educate ourselves on all types of solar installations. We thank you for considering the hundreds of comments from the community as a whole instead of just those from a few large landowners, and we thank you for incorporating the reasonable updates, including protective setbacks, curbs on the noise and light pollution, and limitations on the density of the utility-scale installation. And thank you for all your hard work and for the care you put into the new ordinance.
Thank you, Deborah. Lara Cludy, Linda Painter, Tim Prosh, Bruce Frolic.
Hello, my name is Lara Cludy, 6810 Meyer Park Road, White River Township. First and foremost, I would like to thank you, the Township Planning Committee, for first and foremost, I would like to thank you, the Planning Committee, for all the hard work that you've put into developing this solar ordinance. I've carefully reviewed your recommendations, and I appreciate you making sure that our township master plan is honored. I support this ordinance with one exception. I respectfully request that you consider moving the scope of the project from 5% of land use to 2%. Consumers has made a statement that 2% of farmland would be needed throughout the state to reach their renewable energy goals. Considering that our township has already lost a significant amount of land to past industrial contamination, I don't see the necessity to go beyond the consumer recommendation of 2%. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for all the hard work that you've done.
Thank you, Elle. Linda?
Hello, my name is Linda Friday Painter, and I'm a resident of White River Township. I'd like to thank the township board for all the work that you've done on the solar ordinance. I'm not a good speaker, I'm sorry. I support the ordinance with one exception. I request that you consider moving the land use cap from 5 to 2% to align with Consumer Energy's statement that 2% of farmland needed throughout the state of Michigan to renewable energy goals. And I'd like to say also that my family has been in this area since the Civil War days, before the Civil War, and we've basically lived in that particular area, and I know that they love their land, so I'd like to thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you, Linda. Tim?
My name is Tim Prosh. I live at 6811 Sunset Lane in Montague. I am proud to be a resident of White River Township. This place, the White Lake area, feels special to me. My family has owned property here since 1917. I courted my wife for 51 years here. Seven years ago, when I retired from the career in marketing and advertising, came and I moved here full-time. This place feels special to me, and I want it to feel special to other people too. That's why I support the township's interest in energy sources other than coal and gas. I also applaud, I also applaud the forward-looking people of this township for not only thinking of their own future, but of the future of their kids. for not only thinking of their own future, but of the future of their kids and grandkids. I hope this planning commission acts to continue to make me proud to be a resident of White River Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Bruce, and then Janet Vanderlyes, Carol Mills, and Tracy Dobson.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Bruce Frohlich. I live in the city of Montague. I'd ask that you please create a zoning ordinance that is fair to all of the township residents, particularly include those who support renewable energy and the farmers leasing their land for solar arrays. Please reevaluate your proposed excessively restrictive guidelines in your amendments. Please focus on the positive outcomes with solar energy generation. It will assure greater financial resources, village, tax money coming in to not just the township budget, but the public schools, the ambulance authority, where I've sat on that board for the last seven years, fire protection at Montague Fire. And all of that will result in direct savings for each household in the township. You will have the opportunity, your township board will, of reducing your village imposed on your residents because of the additional revenue that would come from a large-scale solar project. The numbers are there. If you do instead effectively block solar array development, the farmers who are entering their retirement age will have little choice but to sell to other outside developers, even speculators. What choices are you eliminating for these farmers? What consequences will follow? By adopting these amendments, will you block any remaining opportunity for some constructive compromise? Will you have painted yourselves into a corner, a legalistic corner, from which you can't emerge? You heard many assertions during your many hearings. Which of those assertions are supported by provable facts instead of misinformation? You have a difficult task to try to sort that out. It will be your decision whether to recommend these ordinance amendments to the township board. Will that recommendation be based on facts and be defensible and sound public policy now and for the future? Thank you for your hard work and dedication.
Janet? Followed by Carol, Tracy Dobson, Margaux Haines. So who've we got here?
My name is Carol Mills. I live on Flower Creek Road in White River Township. I would like to say that the last five months have proven that participatory government is alive and well. And you have brought people together in this township in a way I never thought would happen. In support of this ordinance, I believe that we need to reduce the five percent, if not two percent, consider three. And I also don't want any actions of this board to be changed by the threat of litigation. I think we need to do the right thing regardless of that potential. And if the township were to do a GoFundMe or a request, I think a lot of people would help fund this legal fight. Thank you.
Uh, no, no, thank you, thank you. Janet?
Janet Vanderlyes, West McKinley Road, Rothbury. I have family farm in White River Township for over a hundred years. I ask White River Township to reevaluate these restrictive amendments and focus on the positive outcomes of participating in solar energy generations. There are many benefits, financial resources for our schools, public service, and township, contributing clean energy to our grid, energy that will be used by White River Township, White Lake, and beyond. Please demonstrate leadership for our young people who will inherit our uncertain future.
Thank you. Tracy Dobson? What's your name? Chelsea? No, Michelle. Michelle Schneider. Okay. Yep, alright. So are you speaking for both of you then?
I'm speaking for Tracy. I've written letters and stuff, so I'm good.
Okay.
Alright.
This is a letter from Tracy?
Yes, she's underway now.
Okay, we don't typically do this, but since you're giving up your three minutes, I'll allow it.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. "The proposed amendments to the 2019 solar ordinance appears to be written to exclude commercial solar energy projects from the township. This is short-sighted and a gross disservice to our children and grandchildren. The misinformation driven by the amendment process is very disturbing. The controversy boils down to aesthetics. Within the township, residents hold many different views of what constitutes a pleasing appearance in the proposed amendments. Township officials would adapt the anti-solar view and place the township at risk of lawsuits from developers and the landowners. If adopted, they would choose a short-term aesthetic over medium and long-term aesthetics: farmland preservation and renewable energy production. I ask township officials to stand firm and tall to preserve our future." I urge that the proposed amendments be scrapped or rewritten. And that's Tracy Dobson from 6635 Law Road in White River Township. I do have a question of my own. Can I ask a question? You don't have to answer it. My question is, I have property in White River Township, and I know that if your land is designated agricultural, you don't pay school tax. So I know a lot of White River Township is agricultural, lots and lots of acres. And would this solar farm also be exempt from paying school tax, the way that the agriculture is set aside?
I'll quickly go ahead and answer that in general.
Oh, pleasure.
It's simply assessment does not necessarily coincide with zoning. And so I'll refer you to the assessor's office for that question.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mike McCoy, Seth Arthur? Yes, Margaux I did.
You sure have a tough job. I had a cold, so I hope I can get through this. Yes, I'm Margaux Haines, and I'm speaking for my children, who are at 8145 Iler's Road, owners of that property, Cabin 12. And I'm not speaking as any member of a group. I myself have been a resident in the township, but my kids are the official residents now, and that dates sixty-one years, I believe. Wanted to make sure I didn't leave something out. I know you worked very hard, and I support a compromise on solar power in the township, but not this amendment as written. These amendments allude to false fears about health, water impacts, noise, hark to soil, and wildlife, and the many untruths they're based on, which makes me feel really sad for what you've had to hear and how you've tried to reach compromise. The amendments also, however, amount to unjust taking of private land due to excessive setbacks and the size of the limitations you've set. This planning commission is stealing the farmer's property rights. Finally, most important maybe, because so many of you are concerned about aesthetics and how things look, which maybe is only the surface of rescuing our planet, but I'd like to talk about the mention of aesthetic concerns in your amendments. You mention it as if everybody agrees on what that means. For me, the beauty of a solar array or a wind farm is the comfort in knowing that we're doing our best to reduce the climate catastrophe that lures ahead. And more beautiful yet are the pollinator plants that your amendments agree will add value to our area. Indeed, pollinator plants can counter the devastation of climate on bees and other critical insects that we need for our farming. You've worked hard on this, but sometimes in the wrong direction. Please don't pass these amendments tonight, but work toward a more even-handed compromise.
Okay, now, Mike McCoy, followed by Seth Arthur, Chelsea Bender, then Bob and Jamie Lloyd. Mike McCoy?
Mike McCoy, 7653 Indian Bay Road in Montague, White River Township. I'd like to thank the planning commission for all their hard work. I know a lot of time has been spent on it, a lot of meetings, a lot of public comments. I read the master plan, and first I'm gonna say I'm a seasonal. This is my second home. Thirty-four percent of the homes in White River Township are listed in the master plan as seasonal. I bought my house here because it's a quiet place. I live near Chicago. I wanted to get away from that in retirement. I don't want to see a solar farm of this scale here. I do agree with the ordinance as it's written. I do request that five percent be lowered to two percent. And again, just thank you very much for your time and all that you put into this.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, Seth Arthur, Lakeside Solar's Legal Counsel. From the beginning, Lakeside has always endeavored to work collaboratively with the township. This included input on the existing comprehensive solar ordinance and also with respect to the proposed solar project. Before the relationship between Lakeside and the township took a negative turn, we had multiple meetings and communications with the township officials regarding the proposed project. We understand that there's going to be give and take and compromise with any proposed development, and we very much hope that a collaborative working relationship will resume in the future. We firmly believe that the township's existing solar ordinance is more than adequate, and we have not heard any rationale from the township for changing that ordinance. With that said, Lakeside would have expected to have input, or at least an opportunity, to discuss any proposed changes to the existing ordinance. The opposite occurred. Lakeside was provided with no opportunity to even consider or discuss the proposed changes before the draft amendment was prepared. As an example, the township did not supply drafts of the proposed amendments to Lakeside before planning commission work sessions, despite Lakeside's repeated requests. Also, at the work sessions, the planning commission discussed the amendments without supplying any reference materials for the public/Lakeside to sufficiently comment on the amendments. This left Lakeside and the public unable to comment or provide substantive input. Additionally, despite being the only pending utility solar project in the township, Lakeside was never asked to be part of any discussions, work sessions, or meetings related to amending the solar ordinance. Considering that any amendments will impact our project, we hope the township would have extended an invitation to consider our perspective on the proposed amendments. Now that we've seen the proposed amendments, we were able to view them on the website, we are very troubled by what we see. The proposed amendments are unreasonable, unnecessary, and likely to negatively impact Lakeside's solar project, along with future projects. As just one example among many, the setbacks of six hundred feet are not something we have seen in other work in other communities. There are many other limitations and restrictions that are both equally problematic and unprecedented in our experience. We certainly would have raised those points in the work sessions or in other meetings or communications with the township if we had been provided such an opportunity. In conclusion, we still believe robust and fairly balances the interests of the community and the rights of individual property owners. If however the planning commission believes that amendments should be recommended to the township board, Lakeside would encourage the planning commission to at least first consider Lakeside's perspective on any such amendments, an opportunity that has been denied to Lakeside thus far. Thank you.
Chelsea Bender? Followed by Bob Lloyd, Jamie Lloyd, Chris Rogers, and Pam Prosh.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Bender. I'm a White River Township resident. I live at 9633 Old Highway 99. We moved back to Montague just last year. Before that, my husband and I lived in Colorado, then Grand Rapids, and then Grand Heven, and we just dreamed of being able to come back. And we were so excited when we had the opportunity. We dreamed, we have three kids, one on the way, and we dreamed of being able to have a small hobby farm with animals, which is what we're currently doing. I also, though, I do support seeing solar and having our kids get an opportunity to see that we are producing green energy in our township. With that being said, I think we have to be careful, how much are we being surrounded by it? And so I do support the amendment for the ordinance. I'm happy and grateful for the work that you guys have put in. I know it's not easy for our family. We have family, my uncle is one of the farmers, and I understand the desire for that as well. And my hope for them is the best, while at the same time providing for all the other residents that are present as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chelsea. Chris Rogers. We're moving you up here. Chris, are you out there? Am I missing you?
No, you dumped some people.
Oh, sorry. Well, they bow down. Pam Prosh is going to follow Chris.
Hi there, I'm Chris Rogers from 9515 Leemos Road, White River Township. Thank you, thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you for hearing your residents. I read the proposal and was like, wow, they listened. So all the time we also have put in was worth it, and that was awesome. I think the ordinance, it did a really good job. I have heard this whole time the word compromise. You have written an ordinance which allows for open green space, for farming space. You have allowed space for the people who actually farm here and work the land to supplement their income, because I know farming is not easy. So I understand their desire to do this also. I appreciate what you have done. I thank you very much, and I ask that this ordinance please gets passed. I feel really good about it, and I thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Pam is up.
Hi, I'm Pam Prosh from White River Township. I am unfortunately against the ordinance as it now stands because I believe it's too restrictive. I do believe that large solar power farms are an important way to delay global warming. And to that point, I'd just like to read a very short letter from my thirteen-year-old grandson. He writes, "Dear Grandma, thanks for sending me the articles about the solar farm. As you've so often told me, I will inherit your home sometime in the next sixty years as the sixth generation of Proshes to own that home, and for that I am eternally and deeply grateful. I understand that a large solar farm will affect the nature of the township, but in my view, if it goes forward, the township will be a much better place. Every year, we study global warming in school, and every year I am more afraid of what will become of our planet. It may not affect you and those who currently own property, but if we don't do something right now, the world will be forever changed for my generation. Simply put, we don't have time for someone else to protect the planet. When I spent time with you last summer, I was so proud to see the solar farm that is already there. I hope you can find a compromise that allows for a large-scale solar farm, if not for you, then for those of us who follow you. Thank you."
Thank you, Pam. We'll have George Marsh, followed by Tom Nipple, Matt Hedges, and Bruce W. We'll have George Marsh, followed by Tom Ipple, Matt Hedges, and Bruce W., with no address. Bruce Wafernake will be? Bruce is saying he passes. Thank you, Bruce.
I'm George Marsh, and I've lived for 47 years on North Old Channel Trail, had property there, and very much love the White River Township and White Island, Montague area. Especially, it's a small enough town where everybody gets to know your name and you get to know them. That's rare. Two weeks ago, a few of us were talking at the planning meeting and talking about solar panels and how this all got to go together. And the, one of the ladies, it was, there was four or five of us in a circle talking, and she said, she pulled out a map, showed her the map right in the middle of where her house would be in that map, and said, "What am I supposed to do about that?" Meeting started, but nobody had an answer at that time. I'm not sure I have the answer now, but I looked through the statements and the printouts and I found this, unfortunately, there's no page number or date on this. Says white river dot com, 4.46. I don't know what that means, but anyway, just talking about utility solar energy system. And the special land use, I'm quoting this, "The special land use is not significantly adverse or impact the property values of the buildings, structures, or lands located within one mile of the solar facilities. A presumption arises that this standard will not be met if substantial evidence indicates that the proposed solar energy system or facilities will decrease the value of any of the parcels or buildings' uses or land value or structures they're in by 15% of fair market value or greater." And it was interesting, at that same meeting, a real estate salesperson got up, who sells for White Lake, and he said that he believed that the property value would go up 25, down 25%. Long story short, take a $200,000 house, take one quarter of it that's $50,000. Everybody of those 80 persons that's in that circle, that mile circle, who are these going to win, are gonna have their property value. And just one example, it's $50,000. Now, that's, that's a lot of money for a family to have.
Thank you, George. Tom Ipple, Matt Hedges, Gary Ingersoll. Tom's gonna appear? Thank you.
I'm in support of Matt Hedges, 10076 Old Highway 99. I am in support of the ordinances. Thank you to Planning Commission for your hard work on these zoning ordinances. The 5% acreage cap is helpful in protecting our master plan. I would ask that the 2% cap be explored more. This will better align Michigan's energy desires to match our township's availability. The 5% acreage cap is in contrast to our master plan, in my opinion. Thank you for further protecting homeowners of White River Township by putting in the 600-foot setbacks. I hope you consider the suggestion of the 2% acreage cap. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Ingersoll, followed by Mitch Coleman, Lucy Grover, and Tim Velcom.
Hi, Gary Ingersoll. I'm born and raised in White River. I moved away for my career in the process of moving back.
Uh huh. And your address?
Well, my local address, 4763 Seag Drive at Stony Lake. But we'll be building on Indian Point on our property there in the near future. I'd like to thank the board for their hard work. I would not want to be on that side of the table right now. Very much in support of the ordinance as written. I would echo the concern that maybe the 5% is too large, but I think it strikes a compromise among all the interests within the township. So with that, I again thank you all, and I am in support of the zoning as written.
Thank you, Gary.
Mitch Coleman. I live at 4874 On Sakami Street in Montague. And if I had a dollar for every time I had to spell "On Sakami" to somebody over the phone, I swear to God.
We got it.
Yeah, thank you. I am opposed to the amendments. I grew up in coal country. My father was a miner. I had uncles who were miners. Coal was very important, putting the roof over our heads, food on the table. And I hate to be disloyal to my heritage, but coal is killing us. Our dependence on fossil fuels is killing us. And this proposal from NGR is a step, a good step, an important step, an essential step in moving us toward a more sustainable energy future. I've heard people tonight say, "Well, I support solar, but not this solar. This is the only solar that we have in front of us. This is it." And if we erect so many barriers that NGR says, "This isn't, we can't do this, we're pulling out," then who's gonna take their place? If you say you support solar, here it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Then Tim.
Hi, my name is Lucy. I live on Fruitvale Road, White River Township. And like everyone else, I want to say that there was a lot of long hours. You've done a lot of listening, a lot of letter reading, and thank you for putting all of this together. I am 110% behind you in these new ordinances. I hope you pass them. I was gonna say something else, but it's been a long night. Please know that your compromise and all of this is appreciated, and I hope that this goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Tim? Followed by Ava Rena, Tanya Kabala, and Nathan Nagelperk.
Tim Velcom, Old Highway 99, 10521. I am against solar, period. I work in the energy business. When I listen to people that say they're for solar, it's kind of conflicting because they're telling everyone they want to get rid of fossil fuels. The truth is, we use more fossil fuels with wind, solar, and battery, just to make it. It produces more hazardous waste than coal. It's bad for the environment. I don't understand why we're pushing it. I believe it's the government.
Tim, excuse me, can you speak to the ordinance, please?
I'm sorry. Yes, I say thank you for the ordinance, but I still think there shouldn't be any. I know you guys have done a good job in the past with wind. Now we're battling the solar, and I'll give you a heads up, you better start working on battery. And look at other things, because people are buying in our community, and they're trying to push this down our throats, and they don't have to see it, but we do. And I've lived in White River since 99. We moved out here because of the beauty of the land. I'm a farm kid. I know farming can be hard. I had a choice to buy my home farm. But you have to be creative. There's a lot of work, and we chose to get rid of it, sell it off to people that wanted to be hobby farmers. We split it so that there were three different people that could. So I am for, against the ordinance.
Thank you. Then Tanya, and Nathan.
I'm Ava Rena, and I live in Addison Dicey Street in Montague, and I also go to Montague High School. And I would just like to urge you to approve the Lakeside solar project in White River Township. As a young person, my future depends on leaders like you to stop fuel pollution. Our earth is at a tuning, turning point, and everyone must do their part to move to renewable energy. Solar energy is safe, quiet, and cost-effective. It will bring many benefits to our community, jobs, money for schools, the government, and local farm operations. Please show leadership and say yes. Along with this, I also have a yes to solar petition.
Okay, and the ordinance itself?
Um, I...
That we're discussing today?
Yeah, I vote yes.
Okay. And then Nathan, and then William Speach.
Why there? I came here today finally dressed to speak to you in my thrift clothes, because if everybody knows me, they knows that I'm, they know that I'm a thrift shopper. So I just thought I'd mention that to you. I'm Tanya Kabala. I live at 714 Allen Street in White Hall, the house I grew up in. Whoops, I lost it. I work for West Michigan Environmental Action Council. I provided our official comments earlier today by email. I do want to thank the board, the township board, for its commitment to environmental protection, involved in our recycling project, and our septic system education maintenance project we've been involved with, and we appreciate the support you provide for the committee SEEP, working to clean up the park. Last week, I attended a conference on climate change that was led by our state government. We are very fortunate to be in a state that is aggressively tackling climate change. We urge you to reconsider these amendments. They will exclude critical and necessary large-scale solar energy infrastructure, and we encourage you to work with the state alongside the many communities that spoke out at this conference. There were over 600 people last week and helped to implement clean energy. I have a long history of speaking out, over 30 years now, and I've not always, I've not ever shied away from making remarks that might be unpopular, and I will do so right now. We all need to be part of the solution, not part of the problem, by saying, "Yeah, solar, but not in our backyard." Thank you.
Did you, are you in support of the ordinance?
No, I, I am.
Okay, thank you.
That it be reconsidered, and then my letter will have more specifics.
Nathan? Hang on just a moment. After Nathan is William, and then Roy Burkholder, and Tyrone Cuddby-Klein. Okay, thank you, Nathan.
I'm Nathan, live on Old Channel Trail. Hello, my wife and I moved to the township eight years ago to get away from concrete and metal and to enjoy God's beautiful creation. I am proud to be the grandson of the late, great Maryam E., whose home by the Gulf Course is being enjoyed by the third generation. The drive-down Chase Road that connects Minor Beach to our beautiful beaches is like something out of a dream. Our township's greatest treasure, potentially most profitable asset, and the envy of all inland communities, is our Lake Michigan coast. Like an innocent daughter, if we do not value our future and hold fast to our master plan in this compromising situation, others will exploit our value for their own gain. It feels unfair that the nine property owners who make up less than 1% of our population be given special rights to turn us into an industrial solar community. I don't even have the right to build a small 600-square-foot cottage on our land. 500 acres of commercial industrial solar would diminish the value of our townships and decrease home value by 25 to 30%. You have good people leaving this township who value beauty and don't like ugly, replaced what by people okay with aged, barbed-wire fences, toxic solar panels, and many surveillance cameras. Just take a look at Gary, Indiana. Why not learn from our DuPont mistake or the most recent Pearson with a 20-year debt?
Nathan?
Contracting out that project ourselves as a township would have been much cheaper and not exploitive. If we want solar, let's start a collective and do it ourselves. I have friends next to the solar field in Montague, and their garden no longer allows to visit, and this is true. Master plan has had flame for the first time. The shrubs around the perimeter fence were planted 15 feet apart and would not have blocked the view even if they weren't accidentally mowed down.
Excuse me, Nathan?
If you want burns and sufficient foliage, it is impossible to enforce your standard once you sign the permit for anyone caught up in global warming theories by which the...
Nathan?
Oh, this, by the way, was considered...
Address the ordinance, please.
...global warming is more than 120 years old. That theory, let me remind you, all the youth's day predictions have failed to materialize. I thank those of you on the Planning Commission who are fighting to preserve the value and beauty of our township. We thank you for the moratorium. We see the unfair lawsuit in U.S. District Court as disrespectful to our township.
Nathan? Your time. Do you, do you support the ordinance or not?
I'm against the ordinance because it's way much more solar than in our master plan.
Thank you. Okay, so, William? Roy Burkholder, Tyrone Klein, and Amy Wilkinson.
First, I just want to thank the board. I can't imagine the amount of hours and the angst you put into doing this, and it's clear that you've taken a lot of feedback, and with that being through, it's much more explicit, it's much more clear than the old ordinance, it's just small, industrial, etc. It's just really clear. You guys have done a fantastic job. I think threading the needle.
Excuse me, did you say your address?
Oh, 11467 Chase Road.
Thank you.
So I'm in favor of the ordinance. With that said, though, we've all talked about Consumers Energy 1, and I do think 2% would be a better cap. But if you go further on the Consumers Energy website there, they talk about things like farm fields less ideal for growing crops, and I see that as being non-prime farmland, and that's what we say we prefer in paragraph MM.11.A. They talk about brownfield sites, and I think one lady mentioned some of the places in Muskegon that were like the old wastewater plants and that stuff. We have chemical, you know, maybe. And then also publicly owned properties. The other thing is, we talk about the cap in MM.6 being against the entire township when actually only a portion of the township would even be considered for an industrial solar system. For instance, we wouldn't take all the residential area and put an industrial solar system there. So I see this being like apples and oranges, where we're taking the entire township for one calculation, but then we're only considering a portion of the township zoning-wise for industrial solar. And by doing that, we essentially double or more the effect on farmland and that type of thing, because we're just not the same, because apples and apples consideration. So again, I think we all need to do our part. I think it's only fair. But I also think, you know, there's limits, and you know, the "we" that we keep talking about is not just the "we" in White River, it's the "we" of the people, the world, and then the communities and that stuff that go way beyond us. So, thank you very much. Well done, and I support it.
Thank you. Roy? And Tyrone, and Amy Wilkinson, and Shelley Reddick-Piari. How about this is that, Roy? Ready? Okay.
My name's Roy Burkholder. I live at 9120 Trails End Drive in White River Township, and I support the proposed solar ordinance amendment. I want to thank the Township Planning Commission for the hard work. I think you found a good balance to allow solar energy systems that are in harmony with our community. Especially like the section under agricultural protection, where it says we want to promote maintaining the existing grading and topography of the site as much as possible. I think whenever you move the topsoil, there's a risk of erosion, and especially in the Pearson Swamp drain easement area. And so I appreciate your concern to protect our environment. That area drains into Lake Michigan, and I think we want to keep that from the sediment. Thank you.
Tyrone?
Uh, my name is Tyrone Klein. I live at 9287 Chase Road. I'm a White River resident. I was born here, sorry. I was born here, left for North Carolina, came back. And now I want to, I want to die here. Thank you to the Planning Commission for looking out for the community as a whole. And a friend of mine said to me, "For the record, I am in agreement with the small-scale solar factory and/or plant ordinance as amended." I am for the lower caps mentioned. Thank you for the moratorium. And I think it should have been a lot longer than what it was. Thank you.
Amy? Followed by Shelley and Mark. Amy?
Hi there. Amy Wilkinson, 11038 Old Highway 99. I'm in support of the solar amendment and grateful to the moratorium that was put in place for us to assess this multi-decade-long impact that the industrial project would have on White River Township. What we have is a rare jewel of a place to live, learn, and work in. There is no place in Michigan that holds such a quiet beauty as the rolling fields of this lovely town. Living surrounded by chain-link fence, steel, and glass is a huge sacrifice for the monetary gain of a very few. Please treasure what we are so lucky to be a part of here, and please uphold the master plan. Do not be swayed by fear-mongering of litigation or lured by promises of big outside money. Thank you very much, Planning Committee.
Shelley and Mark? Mark, thank you? Ah, there he is, okay.
Hi, my name's Shelley Grandfiore, and I live at 10828 Old Highway 99 in White River Township. Um, I would like to say thank you to the Planning Commission for all their hard work and due diligence on this ordinance project. I do support renewable energy for our township when it is in the appropriate size and sculpt that fits with the master plan. I believe that the ordinance is reasonable and comprehensive, and I do support it. However, I would urge lowering the acreage cap to 2%, which does align with Consumers Energy's recommendation to achieve the renewable energy goals for the state of Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. Lori Sheehan, Michelle McLean, Paul Schroeder, Fred Drakis, Diana Collins.
Hi.
Hold on, Lori, just a moment, please. I ran out of time. Okay, so you heard Lori Sheehan is up. Next is Michelle McLean, Paul Schroeder, Fred Drakis, Diana Collins.
Uh, Lori Sheehan, 6690 Lakefront Drive, White River Township. I like everybody else. I'm going to thank you for all of the time and hard work that you have put into this. I support you completely on this. I support the acreage cap of 5%. I support the 600-foot setbacks. I think you have really balanced all of the interests here. And I know that's been tough. I fear that when people talk about the 2%, I know a lot of people want less acreage devoted to this, but I think that that is, almost unreasonable, as the 17% that was originally proposed. So I think consumers' power meant when they said 2% that it was an aggregate across Michigan. Some townships are going to have more that may have lower population density. Some will have less, you know, that sort of thing. So I like the 5%. I think it's a very good compromise. To those people who don't like the compromise, they want the industrial solar, or whatever we're calling it these days, I would say to them, you know, there's appropriate solar and there's inappropriate solar. Appropriate solar is like what some of the people have talked about. It's in the brownfields. It's at the waste treatment plant. Um, it's in the highways. It's, it's good, intelligent solar. To use up this much of our land for solar, I think, is not appropriate. So I like what you've done. I will leave you with a quote, which says, "A good compromise is when both parties are dissatisfied." Good job, you guys. You struck it.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you. I'm Michelle McLean. I'm with the law firm Bolhaus-Hostie-McLean in Granville. I have been retained by five of the owner, landowners that are, that were offered the opportunity to lease their land to the solar company. So speaking of lawsuits, this is not a threat for a lawsuit. I'm simply going to talk about this proposed ordinance does amount to a taking. It's an inverse condemnation. It's a regulatory taking without just compensation in violation of these farmers' Fifth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution and Article 10, Section 22 of the Michigan Constitution. The ordinance, the amended ordinance deprives these landowner farmers of using their land in the most economically beneficial way. First of all, if they can lease to the solar companies, the land does lease under the, I guess, the original ordinance, not the amended, their land value increases. Uh, so obviously, the new ordinance, as proposed, decreases the value of their land. It prohibits the use of their private property in its most profitable way, which is greater than standard farming. And it's causing a substantial financial detriment to these farmers because they, if they are not able to lease under these ordinances, would be due just compensation. And that is why this would likely, more likely than not, end up in litigation. The damages that they claim will be in excess of millions of dollars. And if there is a lawsuit and they prevail, the township would ultimately be on the hook for that. I also would like to note that Mike Cockrell is not here. He is not at these Planning Commission's decisions and discussing this ordinance. And he has recused himself. And you all know that.
Excuse me, we can't speak to that.
I just needed to make that a point to make it on the record. Thank you. Thank you for listening intently to my client's points of view and all the comments. And most of all, thank you for using your cognitive, objective, and analytical abilities and not voting into law, the new proposed amendment. Thank you.
Paul Schroeder, Fred Drakis, Diana Collins, and Marie Longo. Hold on, Paul.
Yep.
Give Julia a moment here to catch up. Ready? Okay, Paul.
Paul Schroeder, 10261 Chase Road, Montague. Um, these guys didn't come here just because they wanted to come to White River Township and do this. There's a grid system that's laying right out here that they're building up to and going to connect to. And, um, this is something that has made a lot of sense to a lot of people since 2017. I know these people have worked on an ordinance, and that was the first ordinance. And every one of you were invited to every one of them meetings. And I've seen very few of you until you thought it wasn't what you wanted.
Paul?
I think that the old ordinance is an ordinance that should stay in place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred Drakis, Diana Collins, Marie Longo, and Alyssa and Larry Teichel? Hang on, Fred.
Can you turn this back on? Okay, thanks. I'll address the board. And I won't threaten the-
No, Fred.
Fred Drakis.
Fred, hold on a moment. That wasn't intentionally turned off, okay? Now... We are caught up. Please, Fred. State your name and address.
Thank you. This is Chair. Fred Drakis, 8182 North Old Channel Trail in White River Township. Our family's been here since the late 1800s when my great-great-grandpa Rantham settled a lot of the land that's actually being discussed. Um, so we have vested interest. A lot of my family members are here tonight. Um, consumers and any other Detroit energy, they're bound by Senate Bill 436 in 2016, which requires 15% renewable energy sources by 2021. So they're pretty good at the math about how much land they need to hit that. They also can buy that power anywhere on the grid. If you read that Senate bill, they're not bound to buy anything from the state. Just like the solar producers are not bound to sell this tax credit that they get, they can turn on and sell this to anybody they want. So the idea that somebody in 20 years is going to still own this that's here tonight or representing those people tonight or threatening us with lawsuits tonight, that's far-fetched. That's not how that business works. So regarding the ordinance, there are a couple of things that I suggest. Uh, like everybody else, 2% seems to be the number that Consumers Energy has come up with. I think they're better at the math than anybody in here, and I would go with their suggestion. I'm reading through your ordinance about fences. It talks about four-foot fences. I drive all over the state with my job, and I see a lot of solar arrays, smaller ones typically, 20 acres here and there. Uh, the one down by Western, I just drove by today on the US-131, nobody has an eight-foot fence. Nobody has a prison fence. Typically, the fences are dark. They're about this high. Deer can jump over them. They have gaps so the wildlife can move. I don't think anybody in this room is interested in going in and messing with a solar array. It doesn't have to be a prison. Is that aesthetics? Yes, it is aesthetics. But I don't think the fences need to be that high. In fact, I think you should limit the height of fences. Um, you also put a noise limit in, which is really appreciated. It's very specific and decibels A-weighted. Um, and, and that is hopefully achievable by these inverters. But you also mentioned downlighting, very briefly mentioned downlighting for any lighting. I think you should be more specific. Uh, you should have a height of the fixtures limitation. You should have an output in lumens, uh, coverage, so that, um, and total coverage per parcel, so that somebody can't just say, "Oh, it's downlighting," but it's a 25-foot pole that essentially becomes a sodium art light and ruins the dark night sky, which is something we treasure in this township. And is an asset, actually, for this township. People come here for that. Um, Article 3, Paragraph 2, Item C, says Shelby harmonious with the township zoning ordinance. I think you should add "and" the master plan. Uh, the master plan is not a suggestion. In fact, with the Chemwars rezoning, you cited the master plan and all of its attributes to rezone that industrial land or suggested you should stick to that master plan for this. I am in favor of this with some tweaking, but I think you've done a great job. And thank you to the board and the chair.
Thank you, Fred. Diana Collins? And Marie Longo? Hi.
Diana Collins. I'm a White River Township resident, 7256 Post Road. And I would like to stand with my neighbors and with you in developing these ordinances and approving them. I especially appreciate the 600-foot setbacks. Uh, my backyard is an open space with lots of wildlife back there. I've been very concerned about that wildlife being able to have corridors. And so that's a good, fair amount. And I would also like to suggest the 2% as Consumers Energy in the state of Michigan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marie? Next up are Alyssa and Larry.
All right, I'm-
Oops. I think she changed her.
I'm Marie Longo. We live on Flower Creek Road in White River Township. I'm from Hart, Michigan. We are buying the 40 acres in Hart Township where I grew up. Used to be a cherry farm. I understand the plight of small farmers, that you can't always make a living in a small farm. My dad pulled all the cherry trees out years ago. And it was hard for them. And I, my heart goes out to these people that want to put these things in. But we moved to this area because we fell in love with it. We like the landscape. We like the integrity of the woods and the nature, the animals. We have deer and turkey in our yard, and we support this ordinance. We would like to see limitations put on this. I believe in solar power. Our daughter had a house out in Oregon. She had solar panels, and it helped to, helped to produce the energy she needed. And I think there's got to be alternative ways that we can use solar power without putting in these eyesores like we have over by, behind the master tag place. It's really ugly. We were so disappointed to see that go in. And, um, I'm hoping that the farmers can find other ways to support themselves rather than to change the integrity of our landscape. So I support this. Thank you very much.
We don't need to turn it off. Are we closing?
No.
Last ones?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Alyssa Mitchell. This is my husband Larry Mitchell. We're from 8305 Flower Creek in White River Township. We live just down the road, traveling minor to our property daily. We want to thank the zoning board for your hard work, as well as our community members for keeping this very civil. It's such a highly emotional topic. We're not anti-solar, nor are we against property owner rights. We are for finding a solution that meets the needs and interests of the whole White River Township community. While we personally do not wish to have any industrial solar farms in White River Township, we do support the hard work of the zoning committee and the work you've done for compromise. We support the proposed amendments as they align better with the township master plan and even recognize the benefit the 600-foot setbacks support all of our neighbors and property values across the township. We would like to request the adjustment from 5% to 2% in alignment with what Consumer Energy has proposed, but appreciate the considerations that have already been made in creating the zoning proposal. Thank you for all of your hard work, and please know that we support the proposed amendment.
I'm Laura Bisho, 8305 Flower Creek Road, and I support the amendment, and I would just like to quickly say that we moved here five years ago because we fell in love with the area, and if we wanted to drive through an area and look at a monstrosity that is going to go up, we would have moved to the city and looked at the ugly buildings just like this ugly project is going to be. Thank you.
Pam Watson, James Luttrell, I think it's Liz, last name begins with an H. Hedges? Okay, so Pam Watson, James Luttrell, Liz Hedges. Pam Watson, not here? Okay. Hey.
Did he name?
Yeah. L-U-T-T-R-U-L-L.
My name is James Luttrell. My address is 8793 Lehman Road. That is in White River Township. Both my wife and I reside here, and we are in favor of the proposed amendment as that is the best that we have at this time. We would like to see some additional restrictions in the form of a maximum amount of township land capped at 2%. Aside from that, like I said, that's the best that we have at this point, okay? We would encourage the township board to review the master plan and listen to the township residents before voting on this, not the outsiders, not the attorneys, but the people who actually have to live here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, James. Liz Hedges, she is here.
My name is Liz Hedges. I live at 10076 Old Highway 99. I support this new ordinance, so does, as it's reasonable and it's comprehensive and aligns much better with our township master plan. I do urge you to consider the suggestion of a 2% acreage cap of utility-scale solar. Thank you for listening to the residents and for all your hard work.
Thank you, Liz. So ends all those who signed up. I'll just take a beat. Anybody else miss signing up? Okay, I will move to close the public hearing portion of the evening. What's that? Patty?
Yeah.
Okay. All in, any discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? Okay, thank you all for attending the public hearing. We really appreciate your input and your enthusiasm about White River Township, and as I have said before, I hope this isn't the end of your involvement in White River Township, okay? Thank you.
We at the township have received approximately...
Patty, hold up. Patty, you need a microphone. Natalie, are you still up there?
Right here.
Thank you. We're going to turn on the microphone so the boards can, the commissions can continue what they're needing. Thank you.
We at the Township Hall have received approximately 150 letters regarding the proposed solar ordinance amendments since February. The residents of White River Township pro-solar, five. Non-residents of White River Township pro-solar, nine. Non-residents solar, against solar in White River Township. Non-residents against all solar in White River Township, seven. The residents of White River Township against solar and/or in support of the proposed ordinance, the ordinance amendment or portions of it, many requested the change to 2% or the balance. Many of the letters received, we noticed that people have changed their minds on portions of how they felt what was acceptable for the solar installations in White River Township. We have done our best to listen to everyone that has written or spoken during meetings. We feel this ordinance, these ordinance amendments strike a compromise for the welfare of all in White River Township. Therefore, I make a motion to accept Solar Amendment 58-2023, an amendment to the White River Township zoning ordinance regarding solar panels, solar energy systems, and related uses and matters, and send 58-2023 to the White River Township Board for consideration.
I'll second that. Madam Chairman?
Um, yes. It's been moved and seconded.
Madam Chairman, this is Cliff, I'm the township attorney. I was a little unclear, maybe I just couldn't hear. Is that a recommendation? Obviously, this board makes a recommendation, the township board, township board makes the final decision. Can I ask for a clarification? I assume, Madam Township Court, that it's a recommendation of approval, and if I'm wrong, but I think we need clarification on that.
I recommend that we send motion 58-2023 to the White River Township Board for their consideration. Is that not good? I'm doing the best I can here.
I know, it's been a long evening for everyone. When you say "you recommend," but it's got to be a recommendation of the whole planning commission, so I think the motion has to be made clear whether the planning commission is recommending approval of the ordinance amendment to the township board or denial.
I retract my, I retract. Well, it says it's got 110, and it's half bad. We've got more to choose from.
I will retract my last motion and reword it. I recommend that the planning commission send, approve to send the solar amendment 58-2023, an amendment to the White River Township zoning ordinance regarding solar panels, solar energy systems, and related uses and matters, and send 58-2023 to the White River Township Board for their consideration.
And I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and supported to send, to approve ordinance, proposed ordinance number 58-23, an amendment to the White River Township zoning ordinance regarding solar panels, solar energy systems, and related uses and matters to the White River Township Board for adoption. We have discussion?
The only discussion that I would add is that I think, I think public hearings are important. I think all, everyone who spoke, I think it's important for people who want to speak to do that. However, during the discussion, I did not hear anything substantially different from input that we've had going through and producing these amendments, and so therefore, I'm in favor of the amendments as they stand.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment at this time? Okay, let's have a roll call vote. Cliff, do I need to repeat it?
I think you did a good job of summarizing a minute ago. I mean, you can if you want, but you probably don't have to.
Okay. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on the White River Township Planning Commission approving the proposed ordinance number 58-2023 and forwarding it to the White River Township Board for adoption. If you'd call the roll, please. Julie?
Bob Hagan?
Aye.
Don Klein?
Aye.
Karen McLean?
Aye.
Craig Harris?
Aye.
Marissa McLew?
Yes.
Patty Sargent?
Yes.
Susan Lloyd?
Yes.
Okay, we have, the planning commission has approved ordinance, proposed ordinance number 58-2023, an amendment to the White River Township zoning ordinance regarding solar panels, solar energy systems, and related uses and matters. This information will be forwarded to the White River Township Board immediately. We have another ordinance.
I'd like to... Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 59, which is a rescission of the solar moratorium put in place in 2023.
It's actually 2022.
Oh, 2022, sorry. Apologies. So I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 59, which would rescind the solar moratorium put in place in 2023.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance, proposed ordinance number 59-2023, recession of the solar moratorium, and forward it to the White River Township Board for adoption. Any discussion? Okay, I'll call...
I have one, one question. This, this also goes to the township board, you said?
I believe so, Cliff.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
There's no discussion. I'll call, roll call vote, please, again, Julie.
Bob Hagan?
Aye.
Don Klein?
Aye.
Karen McLean?
Aye.
Craig Harris?
Aye.
Marissa McLew?
Yes.
Patty Sargent?
Yes.
Susan Lloyd?
Yes.
Okay, we have, the White River Township Planning Commission has approved ordinance number 59-23, recession of the solar moratorium, and will forward it to the White River Township Board recommending adoption. Thank you.
So I have a question to the crowd.
Are you sure you want to go there, Pam?
I have a question. All right. If the township board is going to consider these two items, should we have it here again?
Yes.
Thank you. Be looking for that notice, because that has to be arranged.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will move to adjourn the meeting. On the favor of adjourn the meeting, please. All right, the meeting is adjourned, and...